Are we live yet? Anybody know?
The video's up, so we should be, should be live.
Okay.
All right, Michael.
Back on.
Good morning, Commissioner.
It was, it was working in the other room.
It was working, so it's just.
You don't have to start over.
He don't have to start over. He knows it's working.
Okay, darn.
That'll lock down.
Sorry, Michael.
So, now where I left off, taxpayer-funded lobbyists and some government officials testified that the legislation wasn't needed because they are transparent, and this is apparently not the case. I've listened to some that complained about the lack of transparency on meeting notices and the proposed increases. Not in Bourbon County, but another county commissioner told county employees to show up for the revenue-neutral rate but didn't mention it to others. Only one commissioner in that county voted no on an 8% increase, and the rest voted yes. Some officials are voting yes on the resolution to go revenue-neutral, but saying that that didn't increase property taxes because they lowered the mill. Now, that sounds like us, right?
No.
No.
Why doesn't it?
Because we never.
Because every year we have a hearing, and we say, every year at the hearing, what our assessed value is.
Okay.
And whether or not we are going to, to set that assessed value.
And also what we're saying, we did an outstanding job by dropping 2.5 mills, only raising taxes county-wide, $42,000, and we're also saying we've had growth, so everybody should hopefully pay a little less because the growth helps everyone pay a distribution.
Well, and then again, we're, we're into that scenario that we have a reappraisal every so often.
But we're actually collecting at above the revenue-neutral rate.
$42,000, yes.
Yeah, when they, yeah.
No, no, that's a misstatement.
Okay, well, clear.
And we'll let Susan talk about this, but she just showed me the numbers. Last year's budget, the county, the commission asked for $7,171,700. Okay? This year, we are asking for $7,127,242,000, which is $44,000 less.
Okay.
Than last year.
Then the numbers were that you gave us to, I guess at the work session, you quoted a mill levy that was our mill from prior, prior year.
Right.
What our revenue-neutral mill would have been, and those are?
What, what it was from prior year?
And what your revenue-neutral mill was for this year.
Well, she just.
4.931 was last year.
Okay.
Revenue-neutral rate is 62.13, and we're at 62.5.
So, we are lowering the bills by the, to the revenue-neutral rate, but yet we're raising it.
Okay.
Barely.
So, the, the other.
I'm barely dead.
Yeah, what's your point?
My point is the revenue-neutral rate is nothing more than a shell game that we're being played in the state of Kansas. That when they go to vote for the revenue-neutral rate and collect more money than the previous year, that's a tax increase, and Senate Bill 13 removes this shell game that's being played here and at the city, and why our property taxes just keep going up.
Did I not just say we're asking for $44,000?
After the end of the meeting, after the end of the meeting.
I could do the math, Clifton. I could hear what you said, but when, also, whenever you're approving a revenue-neutral rate, you're opening the door for whatever increase you want to give, you'll, you want to approve to be done. The purpose of Senate Bill 13 was to freeze that rate, was to make that rate impossible to go above.
No.
The revenue-neutral rate. Okay, well, then you'll have to call some of your other
Well, and we do.
Constitutional scholars who might be able to explain to you what revenue-neutral rate is.
We have to have a hearing to, to explain.
The revenue-neutral rate removes the shell game. Why or why not your property taxes increase? I've heard farmers say, "We put in a fence, my property tax goes up." Taxation without representation. Let our voices be heard. The, these are the words of Carol Tyson, who's running for State's Treasurer. I did make this stuff up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan?
I'd like to explain that in order to operate, there's a certain dollar threshold that you need, right? So, last year it was 7.17 that you needed. This year it's 7.127, rounding there. So, it's $44,000 less than what you needed last year. Because your assessed valuation went up, you capture more dollars with a mill. And so, that's why you're able to lower your mill levy a little bit, just naturally, because of your assessed valuation going up. So, you cannot just look at the mill levy. It, it has lots of different things that factor into those numbers. The fact of the matter is, is that you are actually getting $44,000 less in taxes this year. What the revenue-neutral rate does for you, and the reason why we went just a little bit above it, is if, when those numbers come out in November 1st, let's say the $114,000, $114 million actually drops. If you don't have a little bit above that, you will not be able to capture the money that you need to operate next year. And so, that's why you went just a little bit above to make sure that you have the room to exceed if you needed to. And so, that's why you have chosen this direction. Does that make sense?
Well, it does. So, you know, a comment I want to make is, say I see my property that I have. Say that it, the assessed value went up five grand. You know, you're going to tax me at, at 62.5, correct?
Mm-hmm.
For that whole appraised value.
Right.
And if, if we stayed with the revenue-neutral rate, you would tax me at the 60.2.1 rate. Guess what? My taxes went up at the 62.1 rate. It did stay the same because of my assessed valuation.
Yeah, your assessed valuation went up. That is correct.
You know, just, just like, just like, you know, when, when every, everyone in here that, that, that has been appraised because of these home sales, that their assessed value goes up, and a neighborhood, they're going to pay more taxes because that is, that assessed value in their neighborhood.
Because the value of the homes are going up. That is correct. So, there, there, you can't just talk about just the mill levy. You have to talk about the entire, the entire picture here when you're talking about assessed valuation versus mill levy versus how much money we need to operate the county. And like I said, we are doing it with $44,000 less for this year.
Yeah, you know, you take.
And giving a 3% raise.
You take into consideration how much employment benefits went, went up this year. It, it was very tough to get to that figure.
Yeah, I agree.
So, that, so, yeah, yeah. I mean, as far as the shell game, I would, I would say, call Karen. Call Mr. Hildebrandt. They're the ones that, they're the ones that voted for it. Whether they, I don't know, I don't know if they voted to pass it or not. I don't know what their vote was. But I'm, I get a little tired sitting here as a commissioner. People coming and complaining about stuff, they need to call their senator and their House of Representatives in Kansas, because they're the ones that makes the laws that we have to follow. So, I don't have a magic wand that I can wet, raise. What people need to understand is last year, $7,171,700 was asked for. This year, we are asking for $7,127,242, which is $44,000 less than it was last year. Is that clear enough?
But you've left the door open to collect even more.
Not this year, not this year.
That's all we ask.
That's what Senate Bill 13 says. Would you?
Okay, again, that is the state of Kansas. I have nothing to do with the state of Kansas.
The $7,127 will be the only thing that you collect, period. That's all you will collect. When, when Kendall goes in to do her numbers, or the new clerk goes in to do their numbers, that is all that they will levy is to collect those dollars, period.
We're not leaving the window.
Not anymore.
Window open to change it in the future.
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, so our five minutes are up.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Here, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hall of Famer?
Aye.
Aye.
CDBG, is that what you're here for?
Oh, yeah.
Taylor?
Say that. What's that?
No, we'll adopt the budget the next meeting.
Next week, we adopt a budget?
Morning.
Our resolution? R and R resolution?
Yeah, we need an R and R resolution.
Adopt that today?
We can do that next week, too.
What you published was what, what?
What is published next?
Three of them or two of them?
There's two copies of each.
Oh, okay.
One's mine, one is the county's.
Okay.
Um, you'll want to, they'll want to sign. You'll want to sign both of them.
Have to sign both of them. That's the copy that I left.
Okay, thank you.
There's also two resolutions that have to be adopted for the CDBG grant.
Okay.
Are you all ready, or do we?
Okay.
We're going to go ahead. We're going to come right back to you.
Oh, okay.
I did have to, my, I just come back in my lap. I'm wearing a mask today, and I think 70,000 people at the football stadium, not no mask.
Yeah.
They're a lot smarter than I am, I guess.
Okay. So, it's made a motion to adopt this?
So, this is supposed to be, where do you, where do you have this?
September 7th. You want me to read all this?
This is a public hearing?
Hang on, I'm on the, this resolution for the deal.
Oh, okay.
You want me to read all this?
So, this is resolution for?
The Kansas to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. So, I make a motion for resolution number 26-21, a resolution of Bourbon County, Kansas, to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate, whereas the revenue-neutral rate for Bourbon County was calculated as 62.130 mills by the Bourbon County Clerk, and whereas the budget proposed by the governing body of Bourbon County require the levy of a property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate, and whereas the governing body held a hearing on September 7th, 2021, allowing all interested taxpayers desiring to be heard and opportunity to give oral testimony, and whereas the governing body of Bourbon County having heard testimony still finds it necessary to exceed the revenue-neutral rate, now therefore be resolved by the governing body of Bourbon County. Bourbon County shall levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate of 62.5 mills. This resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its adoption. So, remain in effect until for, for future actions taken by the governing body. And then if we vote, or if we do this, it's adopted this day, month, year, and it's signed. And I'd give Chairman O'Hara permission to sign.
Here, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hall of Famer?
Aye.
Aye.
Day the 7th?
Mm-hmm.
All right, here we go. Sorry.
Morning.
Morning. How are you guys?
Good.
Okay, we're here for a public hearing for the CDBG application on behalf of rural water district two. We'll need to open the public hearing, wait for comments. If there's no comments, we can close the public hearing. I hand it some paperwork over. It's our administration contract, some grant documents, and then there's two resolutions that will need to be passed today in order to apply for the CDBG grant.
Kendall has those resolutions?
Uh, yes, and there's some in your stack as well.
Gotcha.
And I gave you two copies of each, one for my office, one for.
All right.
The county.
I would make a motion to open the CDBG public hearing for, I guess it's CRW, or Water District Number Two, with SCK Regional Planning Committee present.
Second.
Any discussion? Have you had a chance to look these over at all?
Not.
Do you want to?
Yes, please.
So, I, open the public hearing for, you want, how much time you need? 15 minutes?
Um, probably five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. Give you 10.
I do have a question.
Okay.
On our agenda, it says adoption resolution assuring KDLC that funds will be continually provided for the operation and means of improvements. Does that mean if rural water is devolved, the county is responsible?
No, it's all in the contract that it falls on rural water district.
Very good.
Yeah, it's rural water district.
Yeah.
CBGD grant.
Yeah, but that kind of reads kind of funny here.
Yeah, he does.
Yeah, okay. That answered my question.
Well, that's my, that's my question, too, Jim. Thanks for having me.
Yeah.
Why are we certifying legal authority to apply? What is that?
Um, in order for, like, a rural water district to apply, a county or a city has to apply on behalf of them.
I got you.
What are they applying for? Um, water line replacement. So, it's a $1.5 million project. They're asking for $700,000 in grants. Okay. My, my only, my only concern.
Is we've had another project where there has been, so basically, the, the, it's on the city side. The city has con, actually makes the contract, actually makes the contract with the contractor that's putting in the line. Is rural water putting in the lines, or are they having a contractor?
We'll have a contractor.
Okay, so in the event that the contractor, there's a major change order, and there's some discrepancies or disputes, does that fall back on the county?
Technically, yes.
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 So, we've had some concerns with some other CDBG grants, and so, just to prepare you, if you, if you move forward with this, your, your insurance company, your legal counsel might have to mitigate any issues, so you may, you may incur some costs if there's a problem in the field with the project. So, just wanted you to be full, full disclosure on this.
So, if, if there's problems arise, or, or it goes over, who's going to be financially responsible?
The rural water district will be responsible for all finances.
Okay.
But, but it has to go through Bourbon County's bid process. It has to go through all of your guys' regulations. We have to follow everything Bourbon County sets up.
There could be some, I mean, again, you could incur some costs because of this. So, I'm not saying don't do it. I just want you to be aware that if there's any problems, you could incur legal costs. You could incur, you may have to be the, you may have to get with your insurance company to, to help fight the situation if, if there is one, especially on like change orders. You're the one that is actually kind of running the show on all the financial piece of it.
But any change order, rural water could step up in this pad.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, they could.
If we do a change order, it has to come.
Through you.
Through us. You have to approve it.
Understand.
Everything has to be approved through you guys before we even submit it to the state for a change order to happen.
Well, I'm not opposed to the project, but I haven't seen the project. I haven't been contacted by anybody at Rural Water District. I'm not, I mean, I'm not, I'm not necessarily willing to give $700,000 to somebody that hasn't even talked to me.
Susan, should we, should we bring this through, or present this suggestion first, before we approve it?
I would think that you should, you should know more about the project. I do.
I mean, where are the, putting water lines? I mean, I'm not saying, they, they probably need them, because I know there's water lines in my area that are 70 years old.
How much is this going to delay you? 30 days you have to do, give notice for public hearing?
This is the last day we can do a public hearing.
Okay.
We're okay, don't?
Yes, our agreement is do the 24, so we can't have another public hearing on this.
Okay. Is there a reason why they were not contacted?
I was under the impression that they had already spoken and got your approval to apply for this grant.
Well, they had approval to apply, but we never, was never provided any information except at that, that.
Yeah, they, yeah, I remember doing that.
Yeah.
But I just, I guess.
They call you, yeah.
Would have liked to have known what, where they're putting these water lines in.
So, to not delay or not be able to apply for the grant, you probably ought to go ahead and go through the public hearing process and then ask them to come in and present to you, is what I would do.
Well, Justin will be here at 10:30, so he could look it over. We could probably take action.
And I believe there's somebody here from Rural Water District that could tell you more about their actual water line. Mark was supposed to be here.
Does Mark here?
That would probably be advisable.
I'll call Mark. Hey, what are you doing? Tell me about this. I'm going to put, can I put you on speaker and tell me about this water line? All right, is that all right? All right, here we go.
From Rural Water Department, uh, we, the water board and the district and our engineer for mag engineering has been, uh, looking to replace some lines down Maple Road, uh, 205th to 175th down into, uh, Marnington. We've got some old gray pipe that's 60 years old, and, uh, we applied for a grant to replace that. You know, I guess I'd heard your questions about, we didn't present anything to you guys, I guess was maybe a problem from us not really knowing that the county had to be kind of tied to it as, as much. We didn't know, you know, where we was at with that. Uh, but we've been working on it for six months, trying to get engineers drawn up and, and, uh, doing some other stuff that involves getting the grant. So, uh, that's mainly what the project is, is going to replace the old gray pipe, put new service line to the meters in, and, uh, oh, just upgrade, put some up-sized pipe, bigger-sized pipe in some of the places, and, and just get rid of the old glue joint pipe to try to help the, with our water loss. So, that's kind of what the project's about, you know, so.
Perfect. Um, I'm going to ask a question, Mark. Are you going to have, you're going to have an outside contractor?
Yes, we'll have to, to get the grant, they said we'll have to get a bid. Of course, we'll probably, I mean, our idea was McEnroe out of Nevada, which has done all of our major projects for us. That's who we're hoping will get it. Um, but you never know.
And they're insured, bonded, obviously, to, they would have to be for that grant.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I know that's kind of a dumb question, but I just want to put that out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, yep.
And then we got our, our insurance policy. I don't know, you know, that would fall back on something. I, I, you know, I wasn't really aware that any of that financial burden would be, could be incurred if we had a lawsuit or something with a change order, because, you know, it's very likely that once we get into something, we're going to find something that wasn't on the map, you know, so.
Absolutely.
Or be, but it's also a MATS grant. Um, the project's $1.5 million, so the water district's going to be, you know, paying for the other half of that. So, you know, um, any of them change orders occurred, we're, the, the district's already, you know, aware of that we may end up having to, you know, spend some more money of our own money and borrow some money. You know, we've already talked to the financial institutions about some of that, so.
I don't have any more questions.
No, I don't. You're uncomfortable with, with the language in this.
Yep.
Contract.
All right, Mark.
Well, we was, we was, really wasn't where we, they said it was a meeting by Skype, so we've been sitting out here at the office watching, so that.
Well, no, you're fine. You're fine.
Okay.
No big deal.
Okay, well, if you got any more questions, or would want us, me and Hubert, Board Chairman, or we need to come to the next meeting, anything, just let us know.
No, I think we're, I think we're good.
I think we're, from, from what?
I'm just curious.
We need to act on this.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Good enough.
Might have Justin look over real quick.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
Um, does this compete with any other CDBG grants for them to be able to apply for, like housing, or community facilities, or?
For Bourbon County? Bourbon County can apply for two grants or other entities, and then you guys can have an additional grant.
Okay.
If you guys have a project, you can still go for that project.
And this is, we've only had this one for this year? Yeah, I'm, we want to wait to let Justin look at it. Right, I mean, he's supposed to be here 10:30, you say?
Oh, you know, I think it'd probably be smart just to have him.
Yeah.
To take a look.
Is that okay? Can you stick around for a little bit?
Yeah, I sure can.
He's, he's supposed to be back by 10:30, if that's okay?
Yeah.
He just texted me, said be here in 45 minutes.
What?
That, that'll be 10:30.
That'd be 10:30.
I just, I just got the text a minute ago. I think he meant 45 minutes from now, but we'll see.
We'll see. So, I guess we could suspend the public hearing?
Yeah, I make a motion to suspend the public hearing on CB, CDBG on the Rural Water District for approximately 45 minutes, um, until legal counsel can get here and look at the contract right quick.
Second.
Any discussion? Hall of Famer?
Aye.
Aye. All righty, Mr. Bailey.
We're going, I mean, now we have to.
He was here earlier.
Closed. We got to. Sorry. We're going to have to ask, we'll have to ask you guys to come back in when CDBG is, we're going to back it. We're going to close the meeting.
Well, we, we have it suspended.
Yeah.
So, we close the meeting.
You got to shut the door, right?
Shut the door.
Yeah.
Everybody out.
Sorry, I'm going.
So, we're still under COVID restrictions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Morning, Eric.
Good morning.
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 You're not going to give us a bad time, are you?
No. Mine's short, a little bit of good news, so.
Yeah, 45 minutes.
Might need four to five minutes. No permits today. Um, the north and northwest part of the county got hit again with six-plus inches of rain, so, um, we're addressing the washouts and hauling some rock in today and trying to correct those situations. So, real quick, you'd ask about the crack sealer.
Yes.
We're looking on the estimates we got. Uh, news 50 to 55. If we rent one, it's $500, around $500 a day, $1,500 a month. Uh, for the material, you're looking about $1,300 for a pallet. But I did visit with the city, and I believe we're going to be able to work out where we may be able to.
Okay.
To share if we get all of our other projects done and caught up and.
And the estimate for Liberty Bell Road was how much?
Liberty Bell?
Yeah. The one we talked about originally.
To crack seal, or?
Yeah.
I, I don't have an estimate on.
To crack seal or, I, I don't have an estimate on for Liberty Bell.
Okay, what'd you get estimate on?
For, I didn't get any estimates on crack seal. This is to purchase a new.
Purchase the machine, okay, I'm sorry.
To purchase the machine, yes.
I got you.
I'm sorry.
I'm with you. I'll catch you up here in a minute.
No, we're fine. So, how much was the machine? Fifty to fifty-five thousand, somewhere, give or take. Is it a trailer?
We could borrow the city's, so.
Yeah, we could borrow. It's a, it's a trailer. Trailer mounted, yeah. But the city has them? Yes.
That'd be a smart move.
Right, that was the route I was.
Yeah, yeah, is that the one that's older than me?
I don't know the exact years on it, so.
Is there some, is there something wrong with age?
There comes the equipment, yes, but, go ahead.
Supposed to get better with age, Jim.
Right.
Yes.
I'm not gonna call that.
So that's, that's where we are in that. I, I feel we need to work with the city and.
Okay.
And borrow theirs and, and, uh, continue that working relationship.
I know Liberty Real Bell Road from Jayhawk to the Dusta Park could use it and Locust Road from the state limits going east could use it, so.
Right.
I'm sure you can find a lot of them that needs it.
Two thirty-fifth needs it as well.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, there's, yeah. So there are several that could use, could use that, so.
I think Rose Meyer passed, she was cracked.
Yeah. Um, good news, let me get it all out here. Back in April, end of April, we applied for a KDOT Local Road Safety Plan Grant. Uh, they notified me Friday that we were accepted or chosen. I meant to get these in color and I got them in black and white, but our arterial and collector roads, they will come in. We have like two hundred and fifty-seven miles of, I'll read it to you here, two hundred and fifty-seven miles of collector roads. I don't know if they wanna look at that or not. And then sixteen miles of other roads that they will come in and, and do a safety plan for us to make the road safer, whether it's signs, what, whatever it might be. Um, cost for the plan is fifty-two thousand, six hundred fifty-three thirty-five. Our share is five thousand, two hundred sixty-five thirty-three.
They just come in and do an assessment for us.
Right, an assessment.
Yeah.
Yes. So if you agree with that, I did have Justin read through the contract and everything. Um, probably will need a, a motion to proceed forward with this, and then there's a spot on here where it requires your signatures. And I'm not sure how this works, Kendall, it has for you to attest, or, so you want them to sign here, or how do we need to do that, or? I'm sorry, got it?
You got it, yeah.
Any motion?
Okay, do we need a motion to do this? You guys good with this? I'm good with it.
And this'll also make us eligible for more grants now. We had to have the safety plan in place to be able. I, yeah, no, I'm good with the safety plan.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve Eric working with KDOT on this Local Road Safety Plan Grant, project number one zero six, CSN Charlie four seven nine zero five, to move forward with the grant. And our portion is, how much, Eric?
Uh, five thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
Our portion is five thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
Eric, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's a spot for the chairman and then there's a spot for you.
So you're saying that gives us the opportunity to apply for grants?
After they get the plan completed, yes. And then we'll actually get a, a notebook and, uh.
Good.
Yeah, one of the things that we've been kinda lacking over the years on, on that was, was, uh, we could very, we never could get much money out for collector roads.
Right.
Yeah.
So just open that up?
Yes, it should open it up.
Okay.
Yeah. If they were on that map.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, in the map.
Yep.
I have the map. All right, it's a good, actually, I got both places.
No, there's just one spot to sign. Those are just other.
Okay, well, there's two tabs.
Yeah, I put several tabs in there for my notes.
For your, for your.
Yeah.
Information.
Right.
So, you know, just looking at them, of course, I was doing some stare and compare from, from years ago in my area. And one of the collector roads that was, was noted was it came in on Ninety-Fifth, hit Unity. It went on up to Seventy-Seventh, then across Floyd. Now they got it straight south off of Ninety-Fifth, it's Rich Road, which is a collector road off of Soldier So.
Yeah.
Or twelve. That's the only one I noted. Maybe more.
Yes, yes. And then the last, while you're looking that over, windmills, excuse me, we have three up in the county. Um, the rain hit them there towards the end of the week, so shut them down for the holiday weekend a little early. And then they will be proceeding, uh, moving some cranes, uh, first part of this week and then be erecting more.
So you've been up watching them putting things up?
I, I have. I did witness the first one go up, so, very interesting. So, any other questions? I believe there is a crane crossing, uh, this week. Uh, they said they would notify me for a road use agreement when they're getting ready to cross, so.
I haven't been down or you're getting close to asphalt?
Asphalt, yes. We are, we lack, uh, one mile from being all the way to the railroad track with one side, then we have to go back to Eagle.
Good.
Um, we would've been asphalting today, but the storm that we had over the weekend.
Yeah.
Knocked power out to the burner, to the oil, and it's reset every time before, but for whatever reason, it did not reset this time, so we were at a hundred and thirty degrees this morning when we showed up to fire the plant up, so.
I understand.
You know how that kinda goes and, so.
It's not rolling nice.
Well, exactly. We lacked six inches from being able to put a tanker boil in there, so, to heat it up, to speed process, so we can't do that, so. Anyhow, we have to wait for the burner now to, um, get us up to two, around two fifty and we were planning on maybe being done this week, but I don't think that's gonna happen now since we lost today. But anyhow, we will.
Only question I had.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything I need to look at?
No, like you and I discussed everything I had.
Yep.
Earlier.
Yep.
As you like to say, my rain gauge stopped at five inches.
Right, right. Yeah, I've heard.
Then it started overflowing.
Anywhere from six plus, so. Just, we had plenty. Yes, we did. So, all right, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I see the, okay, the CBVG lefts for you, so I can throw a resolution number zone there and have them ready?
What was that? Okay.
The packet that she gave you, because I think it's got newer dates.
There they are.
And I will tell you, I did send this to Justin for review already, so if he has gotten it, I haven't heard if he's open or not.
Okay.
What do you, five-minute break?
What's that?
We need a five-minute break.
Okay.
Works for me, yeah.
Five minutes?
I don't wanna talk about this one. He's gonna change the rest of the meeting.
Yeah.
Those two I think we can do. I think it was maybe the whole.
The, the.
I do, let's ask. Yeah, I'm in the middle, but can't be meeting, but that's okay. Has they taken a break? Yeah. How the space of tuition over there?
What's that?
We had this one, but you guys changed the date on this.
I didn't.
That was a very, they had a schedule, so I'm kinda ready.
Right.
Um, so do you agree with that one? Those two items?
See, that's coming right through here.
No, we're just having a map, listen. He's trying to get traction for the city condition. But he's gonna be that same, it's re-train.
I've seen that sun blow pretty well. And so, I'm getting to, to one that doesn't have my name on it.
Okay, now, for the pressure stand.
Well, okay, if I knew that, I couldn't give you all my, my pressure pills.
I'll just go live. Um, so then when you, if you guys choose to adopt, those, here's your two resolutions.
Okay.
And then there's all kinds of ones.
All right, so.
So if you'll adopt this one and sign that one, I'll just give a copy to you.
Okay, great. Adopt this one and sign that one?
No. Adopt and sign, just as first.
Right, first one and then sign this.
No, that's just an extra copy.
That's just a copy?
Yeah, and I'll just give you a copy of all of it.
So they just needed a second copy, okay, gotcha. Uh, sometimes they need two copies signed, sometimes they don't. So none of these here has my name on them? Do I sign them all?
Yes.
Okay. I can do that. So, what's high blood pressure? Mine, mine gets up at a hundred and fifty-five sometimes.
My doctor will tell you that's high.
Huh?
Your doctor will tell you that's high.
Yeah, they will. They always do. Nah, it don't happen at all, often.
I've seen people live for a long time with a hundred and seventy over a hundred, two hundred, four hundred.
Wow. Well, when I was, when I was battling AFib, the, the only time I ever got nervous was when that get up about a hundred and eighty beats per minute. They didn't like that.
No, no, it's getting closer to shutting down.
Nice to get past that. I said the biggest one that surprised me was the effects of that, uh, statin drug had on me. Oh my gosh. Well, they took, they took me off of it, man, you talk about change. Wow. I asked myself, well, I says a seventy-four, do I need to go beyond that? Says, well, yeah, kinda. So they put me on something different, seemed to be working.
Lynn, somewhere along the line this morning, I need to request an executive session for ten minutes.
Think we can do that for, in our commissioner time?
Yeah, okay.
I wanna see why not.
amend the agenda?
Mm-hmm, just amend the agenda.
I don't see my name. I don't care.
It's got a lot of signage. Might run out of ink.
I'll get you a new pen, because you're gonna have just as much to sign on the next one.
Well, I got a whole bunch of them.
All right, thank you.
You're back, thank you. Okay. What's that? One more?
Yeah, it wasn't fine.
Okay, that's fine. There we go. So, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Shall I work with Justin?
We got a CIC contract in here.
Yeah, we did have a CIC contract, so, so we're on the C.
Shane gonna talk about that, or?
We were gonna talk about that. Susan was gonna fill us in on that. Did you have any time to look at that CIC contract?
I know a little bit.
I have. Um, we are looking at something a little bit different in the work, so if we could just kinda hold until we, for the very last minute, sign that, I would prefer that.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to, um, actually amend the agenda, um, to move this CIC contract, um, right after Susan bankrupt, right before public comment, and to move county councillor comment after Susan.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So I guess I'm up.
Mm-hmm.
So, over the course of the last month, we've had, um, Rural Water that has requested some ARPA funding for some meters. Um, that was eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars, and that would qualify under, um.
Let's say that was not, it's not Rural Water District number two that just applies to that grant. It's a different Rural Water District.
No, it's number two.
No, it's not, it's not same one, though. This is Bourbon County Rule, let me back up. This is Allen slash Bourbon Rule Number Two.
Okay, okay.
So different than what?
Yes, completely different, yeah.
Okay.
Just so people understand that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, that is one request. And then Shane, I think he's still in here, he is making a request for ambulances, um, to upgrade their hardware, um, computers uh, so that they can get into CAD dispatch, right?
So they can get to the maps in their reporting system. They've been using iPads and they're worn out. The iPads only last like a couple of years, so we wanna get them mounted computers. Then they can log into the map system, we'll show them where addresses are, 'cause we get people in here that are from out of town, they don't know the county. Then when they're on transports, they can use a laptop to generate their reports, so they're not waiting until they get back to the EMS building to do it.
Yeah, it happens more than often, you think, too.
Yeah.
That they don't get to the right address.
What's the cost?
To do it in all six of them, I believe it was like twenty-six, twenty-six thousand.
Each?
No, no, no.
Total?
For everything. Yeah, 'cause it's around four thousand a computer, and then they need special power supplies to hook into the ambulance. It's the same thing we put in the sheriff's car, all their cars.
And then we have one other request, um, it's S E K Mental Health, and I have not had a chance to reach out to them to see if that's just for Fort Scott. Shane, hang on a second. So, um, and it was for two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred, so, but I haven't had a chance to reach out to them yet to find out if that just stays here in Bourbon County.
How, and, and what would be a timeframe on those computers?
Well, they'd make them when you order them, so if we ordered them, you know, sometime this week, we'd probably have them in five weeks, something like that.
So we have a, we have enough money to cover those two ambulances and the meters?
Yeah.
Will we ever receive a financial statement from them?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Are you recommending moving forward with them, or?
Um, I would, yes. For the amount, yes.
These are generally, I think, water meters on Burma Island Lake, on that western part that serves, so.
Well, and the iPads only last a year and a half, I mean, they're rough on them. These are, you know, tough book type computers, military grade, so they'll last, we usually get six, seven years out of them.
And the iPads, they have, they're, they're functioning though currently with iPads?
Yeah, that's what they've been trying to use, but it's kind of hard to type a report on an iPad.
Right.
Yes.
When you're driving, you know, somebody's riding in the back while they're doing transports. So what they've been typically doing is wait until they get back, and then you may get called out again and have four or five reports you have to do.
But I think you could hold tight if you wanted to wait on it a week.
Yeah, I think we should, actually.
Okay.
All right.
Yep, that's it.
Now, why are we, why are we waiting a week?
Um, I can...
Well, that would be an executive session.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do an executive session later. So, is, are any of those, would you like to approve today, or you want me to bring them back to the next meeting?
Yeah, you know, I don't have a problem with the meters and, and the terminals.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I think that's good, we need to, I need to kind of find out, the question I had was the two hundred and twelve thousand for mental health, is that over a two-year period? Or is that just, let's say over here? Or is that over a four-year period, or is it just what they want totally from that, uh, from that pool of, uh?
I think it's, I think it's from, I think it's a one-time ask, the way I was reading it.
So we could, you know, we could probably, next year we got one point four million dollars? So we could probably look at that again, because this year we're starting to get tight?
Mm-hmm, yes, I would agree. Um, so today I would just recommend maybe just doing the Rural Water one, if you guys are all comfortable with that.
How about the, the terminals?
I would hold on that one.
Hold on, hold on.
I would, uh, I would, I'm gonna request an executive session since it's Susan's time, because I would like her in there.
Okay.
So I'm gonna make a, like a motion to amend, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the agenda to add a pretty short, um, well, it takes us a while to walk down here, so.
Seven minutes.
A seven-minute executive session with Miss Bancroft.
Okay.
Yes.
Go to your second.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye, okay, I'd like an executive session under KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B four to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships, to do just that, to, um, to keep their information private. And it would be myself, um, Chairman O'Hara, Jim Harris, Susan Bancroft, and Rob Harrington for seven minutes. Uh, we would return here at ten eighteen.
Go to your second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I make a motion to resume normal session. Ten eighteen, no action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Susan.
CIC contract? For the CIC contract, we actually had a conversation with them last week, Shane and I, and they pretty much just dropped the ball on all of our request. You know, for put together a good spreadsheet that showed everything that she had had struggles with. And so they're aggressively working to try and get those resolved. I still don't think that they're going to have what we need to be efficient, successful. Their work order system does not work, which is one of the biggest things that we probably need. And so we have looked at Pub Works, which is, Lynn County uses it, I think Allen County uses it. And so we're kind of looking at it. We may come back later on with maybe a suggestion of maybe using that. So we're still looking into it. I don't know when the last date is to sign that contract with CIC. Does anybody have that contract?
Discriminated as of August first.
Is it late?
No, it may be late.
August first, we might be a little behind.
I thought Shane said September, but...
Yeah, I thought he did too. Last meeting.
A September renewal?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think what we can do is go back and say until they've resolved these issues with us, we're going to hold the agreement. And that kind of holds their feet to the fire a little bit.
Okay.
And I can have that conversation with Shane to kind of discuss that with them. So maybe they'll get some things accomplished for us.
Okay, hold the agenda where we need to.
Yep, yep. We can do that.
Do you want to talk to me more on the Harper funding or bring it in?
Do you want to go ahead and move forward with funding the rural water request?
Come on.
And we'll hold on the other two.
Here, take a motion.
I'm looking for the amount I want to talk about here.
Eighteen thousand two fifty-one.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to move forward using ARPA funds to assist Neosho Allen Bourbon Rural Water District Number Two on their grant process to construct new lines in the western part of Bourbon County. Our funding is eighteen thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars.
And this is your Harper funding?
Yes.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. Sue, you're contacting the rural water people?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Justin's supposed to be here in about eight minutes.
So I would like to amend the agenda to put county councillor comment, I guess, at the end of our meeting after commission comment. Or, yeah.
Okay. After the commission comment?
Yeah.
All right, do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? Got any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We're ready for public comment.
No public comments that I can say? Any elected officials here in the book to speak?
Nope. I didn't show up.
Okay, commissioners' comments. Did you say you wanted to amend the agenda?
I would like to ask commission to amend the agenda to hold a ten-minute executive session. I'm asking for it right now.
Second, I second that.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Okay, I'd like to request, let me get my glasses on here, folks. That's too...
Well, Justin's here.
I'd like to request executive session for KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy and job performance.
Your second. How long?
Who's in it?
The three commissioners, Susan and Justin and Ashley Shutton.
For how long?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes. So will we return here at like...
Ten thirty-four.
I second that.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
How are you?
I'm good, dude.
My hair is cut.
Yeah.
All back in. No action.
I guess we're still live. I make a motion to resume normal session. It's ten thirty-four. It's on, man.
Okay.
It's beyond, I guess.
That is...
Says live, anyway.
Well, Lynn is not up.
Resume normal session at ten thirty-four, no action.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I move we suspend commissioner comments and resume the CBGD grant process. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll wait to...
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is public hearing. So Justin, the only thing we had was we needed, did you take a look at that and give us your thoughts?
Yeah, I've reviewed this. The one thing that always is of interest to me is how you terminate a contract. And this one basically is without cost, thirty-day notice, you know, either party. Obviously, we want this neighborhood revitalization. This is a CBD grant. We want this done. I mean, I've reviewed these before. It's the same kind of language. So really, the termination part is the important part. Once the money's disseminated, we want the buildings fixed up or the businesses to start or things of that nature. So I've looked at this and it's legally, it's good to go.
Okay.
So, especially with, since it's water, you know, it's just a water, it's for water districts.
We have a resolution of the... What's that? Okay. Okay, gotcha. Gotcha. If I can get my front fingers to turn that page. There's two resolutions, this one and this one.
All right. Justin, I need to read this one. I already...
It's a, is it going to be a resolution or a contract?
Well, it's a resolution.
This is a resolution certifying legal authority. Okay. I make a motion to accept Resolution twenty-seven dash twenty-one. It's the County of Bourbon, Kansas Resolution Number twenty-seven dash twenty-one, Resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the two thousand twenty-two Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorizing the mayor commissioner to sign and submit such an application, whereas the County of Bourbon, Kansas is a legal government entity as provided by the laws of the state of Kansas, and whereas the County of Bourbon, Kansas intends to submit an application for assistance on behalf of Consolidated Rural Water District Number Two from the Community Development Block Grant Program. The applicant hereby certifies that the County of Bourbon, Kansas is a legal government entity under the status of the laws of the state of Kansas, and thereby has the authority to apply for assistance from the Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. The applicant hereby authorizes the mayor commissioner of Bourbon County, Kansas act as the applicant's official representative in signing and submitting an application for the assistance to the Community Development Block Grant Program. The applicant hereby dedicates eight hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred thousand in cash funds towards this project and zero enforced account labor for same, approved by the governing body of the County of Bourbon, Kansas, this seventh day of September two thousand twenty-one.
So do I hear second on the previous resolution?
I second that motion on the resolution.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 You need somebody else to read that second one?
I'll just keep going.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to accept Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-one concerning the CDBG grant. It's the City, County of Bourbon, Kansas Resolution Number twenty-eight dash twenty-one, a resolution assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of improvements to the CRWD-two waterline system to be financed with community development block grant funds, whereas the County of Bourbon, Kansas is applying for the small cities. Community development block grant funds under the water sewer category is administered by the Kansas Department of Commerce, and whereas the County of Bourbon wishes to utilize this funding for the purpose of constructing improvement to the Consolidated Rural Water District Two water system as described in the community development block grant application submitted to the Kansas Department of Commerce, and whereas the County of Bourbon has determined the annual operation and maintenance cost of CRWD-two water system improvements are anticipated to be approximately one hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, and whereas the annual Consolidated Rural Water District Two's budget has been determined to be adequate to fund the operation and maintenance of the water system. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing body of the County of Bourbon, Kansas hereby assures the Kansas Department of Commerce that sufficient funds will be provided for the continued operation. Makes of the above described improvement that these operation and maintenance costs will be reviewed annually and that the budget will be adjusted when necessary to reflect and cover any increase in costs adopted by the governing body of the County of Bourbon on the seventh day of September two thousand twenty-one. I would also add that to this motion that Chairman O'Hara can sign this, because that wasn't in this one, I don't think.
Your second?
I second to approve that resolution.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So do I need to sign these also? You don't have my impression. Sign on the dotted line.
She'll give me just a few minutes. I need to go help somebody make a copy of this.
Sure.
All kinds of time.
It'll probably take about five minutes. I need to stand a few seconds.
Sure. Five more minutes to allow her...
Take your time, Kendall, whatever. I told her, I said, "Take your time, whatever."
Might take a nap.
Yeah.
I won't be there Thursday. I'm going to Chicago Thursday morning.
Oh, yeah.
Got to trade a bird dog off, try to break even.
Oh, yeah, okay. Hmm. More. I'm not the mayor. Don't get all the... Here I go.
Yes.
Anything else? Mercy. Or signed up here?
It wants down there too, though.
Breathe. Think I might be in?
Thank you, guys. All right, let me go get somebody to make some copies.
Okay.
Little parade yesterday out in New Town?
Well, I went to the function. There was a...
Lot of people?
No.
Oh, really?
No.
That surprised me.
It was way down this year. You know, like Pete George said, Skeeter. Said, you know, before it was around about four hundred meters. They were down two hundred this year.
Wow. That is a big drop, but...
Well, I... Last year didn't hit it.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Can you guys officially close the public hearing?
Yep.
Yes. I'm going to wait. Go ahead.
I make a motion to close the CDBG public hearing concerning CRWD-two waterline system.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting is closed to the public. The meeting is closed to the public. We'll just close the door.
I'll do that on my way out.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Okay. I remember we resumed commissioner comments. Well, we were in the middle of commissioner comments. We were right putting it at the bottom of the list.
You got to move to the bottom.
Any, anything else? You got anything else?
I don't have anything.
So, me, the only comment I have is commissioners give me permission to... but we're still going to look at that and take some, take some time on that issue. I did talk to Mr. Farmer this morning, we played phone tag last week, we're going to keep working on the sewer district, we hope to have that to you all fairly shortly and get it finalized, hopefully by the next commission meeting, that's, that's done, and I guess there's a third thing, yesterday I worked on the tax sale, we're, hopefully we're going to have it in the first Thursday in August, or August, October, on the seventh, so we're going to have some parcels that'll be ready to go for that first sale. I appreciate the title company, they're giving us some abstracts so we can get ready for the second sale, but I know from multiple people that the title company is very busy, which is, you know, we've been saying that a lot, but that's still, the housing market in Fort Scott is, and in Bourbon County is still on fire, so, good stuff there.
You need most of him to sign that HR?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm, I'm, I'm going to request three motions, the first motion is to allow for the three Commissioners to attend the Republican Party this Thursday, I think that it would be important, based off the position that's needing to be filled, we appreciate all the years that Kendall has been with us, I've really enjoyed working with her, we've had a good working relationship over the years, I mean, sometimes, you know, it's, it's, sometimes it's tough to work on stuff like core requests and, you know, different things that have happened over the years, that they've, you know, election stuff, has been a lot of trials and tribulations, but it's been a pleasure and a joy to work for Kendall, I'm happy for her new position, but I think they need you guys there for the, for that Republican Party, just to have that conversation, so I'd ask that the three Commissioners are able to attend that.
Motion.
I make a motion that the three Commissioners can attend at the same time, the, sorry, I'm trying to look, it's the Republican Committee Party, or Republican Party meeting that's on September ninth, I believe it starts at six-thirty, but I'm, might be six, I'm not positive on that.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I've been in conversation with Mr. Farmer concerning a shared service agreement with an HR director, the city of Fort Scott would take on twenty-five hours a week, and then the county would take on fifteen hours a week. I did talk to Mr. Farmer again this morning, we've kind of hammered out the last parts of that contract, and I'll have that done into him, hopefully by the end of today, and then he'll get it approved by tomorrow, I'd ask that Chairman O'Hara be allowed to sign that contract for, it's a one-year contract, it starts January one, it would terminate January one of two thousand twenty-three.
December thirty-first?
Yeah. Or I want to start, it'll start January one.
January, January?
January to January.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll make a motion to allow Chairman O'Hara to sign the joint agreement with the city of Fort Scott for HR director, fifteen hours a week to the county, beginning January first.
Then, one night, have they, go ahead. Here, a second?
Second.
So, on that agreement, are they hammering out salaries?
Yeah, well, we'll get the salary hammered out, I think it'll be for us, it'll be a lot like our other shared service agreements that we have now with two, two other employees, and then it'll be almost a verbatim contract, the same that we've signed before, so it's just changing the names, the job description, you know, we've never really had an HR director per se at the county, so we'll probably piggyback onto the job description that the city of Fort Scott has.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And then I, I've asked to allow for Chairman O'Hara not to necessarily sign the sewer agreement, but to actually sit down with me and go over that sewer agreement once I get it, so that we can make sure all the questions are answered, you know, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, that give him the ability to meet with me this week.
Here, a motion?
We need a motion for that?
I think so, just because, well, I mean, not necessarily, I guess I'm letting you know that he's permission to do that, and actually to be the chair, I mean, to be a Commissioner during those negotiations, he possibly might meet with Mr. McCoy, myself, and Mr. Farmer if need be.
So I'd make a motion to allow Chairman O'Hara to be the lead on the, the lead Commissioner and to meet with, meet, Councilor Meeks and whoever on the sewer district agreement.
Here, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? How long has we been doing this?
Wow, I'm glad that we're coming to a finalization.
I am too.
Yeah.
It's been a long project.
Yeah, it's been a long project, and it, it's needed, but it just, we had no idea what was going to transpire in that neck of the woods, which is a good thing, so...
Right. Bludgeon.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Bailey's here, it's actually, this is a issue that came up over the weekend, I need attorney-client privilege with it, but I also, it's a, you know, we, we don't want Eric to be in the room when it's attorney-client privilege, but there's also another issue with personnel that we could go in with Eric and talk about a little bit, and if we need to go back in for attorney-client privilege, we can, but it definitely deals with personnel issues, time on task, you know, possible litigation, so, it, it would have to go in for personnel matters for those two issues, and then if we get to the point where the litigation comes up and we're uncomfortable with that aspect, we can stop that executive session and come back out and just have the four of us go in, but he's, Mr. Bailey's here.
Okay, so how long you need for first one?
Five, we probably, we probably want to go in for seven, ten minutes, seven minutes?
Seven.
Seven minutes, so it would be personnel issues.
I'd make a...
First one, can I run something by you before we go into the executive session?
We'd have to amend the agenda.
We'd have to amend the agenda for...
We can do that when we come back.
Perfect.
I make a motion to go into executive session during County Councilor Meeks' time here, under KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one, to discuss personnel matters of individual, non-elected personnel.
Job performance, too.
To protect their privacy under job performance...
Job functions.
Job function, it would be myself, the two other Commissioners, County Councilor Meeks and Eric Bailey, and it will be for seven, seven minutes, so we will return here at eleven oh six.
Here, a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Susan, under the bus.
I appreciate that. That's all I had. County Councilor.
I appreciate your patience with me this morning, I needed to be in Lynn County just for a brief moment this morning, so I apologize for being a little late. Two things on the record, and I need an executive session for attorney-client privilege, possible litigation for probably seven minutes, but I did get a phone call from an attorney who represents some parties right outside of Redfield on their sewer district issue, we had a conversation with regards to that, and hopefully in the next coming weeks or months, we can hopefully come to some resolution. He did talk to me about a variance, you know, coming underneath the one acre that's suggested or recommended or actually ordered by KDHD, we have done some variances in our county before, we've discussed that for lateral lines for septic system, the problem is, is that the variances would be quite a bit, so we're looking at a parcel that could actually have a, a easement to expand the lateral lines for the people that live in that area, and that could possibly be something that we could approve, because that would be an acre, but it's just a matter of if that's going to, you know, be acceptable to the commission, but we're still going to look at that and take some, take some time on that issue. I did talk to Mr. Farmer this morning, we played phone tag last week, we're going to keep working on the sewer district, we hope to have that to you all fairly shortly and get it finalized, hopefully by the next commission meeting, that's, that's done, and I guess there's a third thing, yesterday I worked on the tax sale, we're, hopefully we're going to have it in the first Thursday in August, or August, October, on the seventh, so we're going to have some parcels that'll be ready to go for that first sale. I appreciate the title company, they're giving us some abstracts so we can get ready for the second sale, but I know from multiple people that the title company is very busy, which is, you know, we've been saying that a lot, but that's still, the housing market in Fort Scott is, and in Bourbon County is still on fire, so, good stuff there.
You need most of him to sign that HR?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm, I'm, I'm going to request three motions, the first motion is to allow for the three Commissioners to attend the Republican Party this Thursday, I think that it would be important, based off the position that's needing to be filled, we appreciate all the years that Kendall has been with us, I've really enjoyed working with her, we've had a good working relationship over the years, I mean, sometimes, you know, it's, it's, sometimes it's tough to work on stuff like core requests and, you know, different things that have happened over the years, that they've, you know, election stuff, has been a lot of trials and tribulations, but it's been a pleasure and a joy to work for Kendall, I'm happy for her new position, but I think they need you guys there for the, for that Republican Party, just to have that conversation, so I'd ask that the three Commissioners are able to attend that.
Motion.
I make a motion that the three Commissioners can attend at the same time, the, sorry, I'm trying to look, it's the Republican Committee Party, or Republican Party meeting that's on September ninth, I believe it starts at six-thirty, but I'm, might be six, I'm not positive on that.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I've been in conversation with Mr. Farmer concerning a shared service agreement with an HR director, the city of Fort Scott would take on twenty-five hours a week, and then the county would take on fifteen hours a week, I did talk to Mr. Farmer again this morning, we've kind of hammered out the last parts of that contract, and I'll have that done into him, hopefully by the end of today, and then he'll get it approved by tomorrow, I'd ask that Chairman O'Hara be allowed to sign that contract for, it's a one-year contract that starts January one, it would terminate January one of two thousand twenty-three.
January thirty-first?
Yeah. Or I want to start, it'll start January one.
January, January?
January to January.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll make a motion to allow Chairman O'Hara to sign the joint agreement with the city of Fort Scott for HR director, fifteen hours a week to the county, beginning January first.
Then, one night, have they, go ahead. Here, a second?
Second.
So, on that agreement, are they hammering out salaries?
Yeah, well, we'll get the salary hammered out, I think it'll be for us, it'll be a lot like our other shared service agreements that we have now with two, two other employees, and then it'll be almost a verbatim contract, the same that we've signed before, so it's just changing the names, the job description, you know, we've never really had an HR director per se at the county, so we'll probably piggyback onto the job description that the city of Fort Scott has.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And then I, I've asked to allow for Chairman O'Hara not to necessarily sign the sewer agreement, but to actually sit down with me and go over that sewer agreement once I get it, so that we can make sure all the questions are answered, you know, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, that give him the ability to meet with me this week.
Here, a motion?
We need a motion for that?
I think so, just because, well, I mean, not necessarily, I guess I'm letting you know that he's permission to do that, and actually to be the chair, I mean, to be a Commissioner during those negotiations, he possibly might meet with Mr. McCoy, myself, and Mr. Farmer if need be.
So I'd make a motion to allow Chairman O'Hara to be the lead on the, the lead Commissioner and to meet with, meet, Councilor Meeks and whoever on the sewer district agreement.
Here, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? How long has we been doing this?
Wow, I'm glad that we're coming to a finalization.
I am too.
Yeah.
It's been a long project.
Yeah, it's been a long project, and it, it's needed, but it just, we had no idea what was going to transpire in that neck of the woods, which is a good thing, so...
Right. Bludgeon.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Bailey's here, it's actually, this is a issue that came up over the weekend, I need attorney-client privilege with it, but I also, it's a, you know, we, we don't want Eric to be in the room when it's attorney-client privilege, but there's also another issue with personnel that we could go in with Eric and talk about a little bit, and if we need to go back in for attorney-client privilege, we can, but it definitely deals with personnel issues, time on task, you know, possible litigation, so, it, it would have to go in for personnel matters for those two issues, and then if we get to the point where the litigation comes up and we're uncomfortable with that aspect, we can stop that executive session and come back out and just have the four of us go in, but he's, Mr. Bailey's here.
Okay, so how long you need for first one?
Five, we probably, we probably want to go in for seven, ten minutes, seven minutes?
Seven.
Seven minutes, so it would be personnel issues.
I'd make a...
First one, can I run something by you before we go into the executive session?
We'd have to amend the agenda.
We'd have to amend the agenda for...
We can do that when we come back.
Perfect.
I make a motion to go into executive session during County Councilor Meeks' time here, under KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one, to discuss personnel matters of individual, non-elected personnel.
Job performance, too.
To protect their privacy under job performance...
Job functions.
Job function, it would be myself, the two other Commissioners, County Councilor Meeks and Eric Bailey, and it will be for seven, seven minutes, so we will return here at eleven oh six.
Here, a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'm looking forward to your story on this one.[1531.12]